Yeah.
There's Sean.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we've got a, all right, we've got a forum, so our public meeting is in session and I assume we're gonna go into exec if we have a motion to do so.
Yeah, uh, well, we'll be moved. Uh, I, I entered to executive session for the purpose of, uh, discussion, collective bargaining, bargaining and need for, uh, the employment history of particular individuals and pending litigation.
Second.
Second, okay, we got a second, okay, good, very good, and so Emily, please call the roll and we can do this.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, Sean.
Yes.
Darren Troyal.
Yes.
Kelly Evans. Elder Harris.
Yes, ma'am.
Nicole Fave.
Yes.
Moira Lynn.
Yes.
Chris Malcolm.
Yes.
Oh.
Pat Wazle.
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna move into exec and there's a link, correct, and Emily's gonna send it on. Back and I see at least three board members and two here, Eldred will be joining us a minute online, and so we have a core, so that means we can continue and so what the agenda, we're not changing anything, correct, right? Are we good? Not changing anything for anyone, and so I think we, so we're good to just go ahead and get started, and I think we have some students, students from Bell Sherman, some others perhaps that want to speak to the board, we're gonna do that first and we can go to public comment period if you're from students in the room, and so I'm letting, letting all that percolate while we do it electronically. Awesome. And Jeff Tomasic and others, whenever you're ready, we're glad to, glad to hear.
Okay, all right, so thank you so much for having us join you at the start of the meeting. I know a lot of you folks, if you don't know me, my name is Jeff Tomasic and I have the honor and privilege of being the principal at Bell Sherman Elementary School. The year has certainly presented some challenges, but it also has not stopped us from finding joy and having our students take action to make the school more inclusive for everyone. So I'm so excited to have three of our students presenting you a short presentation this evening, and there's also some key staff members who have helped create this environment at Bell Sherman where kids are empowered to do what they need to do to help make it a safe and affirming place for all our kids, so without further ado, I'm gonna turn things over to Ms. Miranda Bianchi, who is our school social worker intern, so take it away, Miranda.
Thank you so much, Jeff, and I also wanted to thank the board for giving us this opportunity to present this amazing work that these students have been doing. So my name is Miranda Bianchi, my pronouns are she and they, and I'm the social work intern at Bell Sherman, I'm currently pursuing my doctor's in social work at SUNY Binghamton, and I've had the privilege of working with our peer educators who are these amazing, passionate, empathetic youth activists in fifth grade since September of the beginning of this year. And so tonight we have three of them that are representing many more students who have been working on these projects, and I'm gonna stop talking because we'd rather listen to all of them, so I'm gonna turn it over to my friend, Shontal.
Uh, hi, my name is Shontal Schwam-Palmroyd, my pronouns are he, they. So this group all started, one day we were doing introductions, and one of us asked, what are your pronouns? We found out that nearly half the class doesn't use their birth pronouns, and they don't identify as boy or girl. And then our group started and we began to meet, and each week we would talk and plan, we talked about gender and pronouns and all of that type of stuff. Our group is kinda just all about teaching people about, like, just gender and all of that type of stuff, and the importance of not just saying, oh, that person is a girl, or, oh, that person is a boy, upon sight of someone, and instead just asking them. So if you're nervous about misgendering someone or using the incorrect pronouns, you can just use they/them. So, yeah, Theo, you can do your stuff about, yeah.
Thanks, Shontal, um, hi, my name is Theo and I am gender fluid, and our only choice was to make the upstairs bathroom gender inclusive because it was the only way to make everybody feel included and comfortable. I think if you don't identify as a certain gender, you can use the gender inclusive bathrooms because it's for all genders, but I think the kids who are, who are using the stop and go signs are doing pretty good, but sometimes you have to knock just to make sure. It was so cool to make the new signs because it made all of us feel included, now I'm gonna hand this microphone over to Ayana.
Um, hello, I'm Ayana, I use he/she pronouns, and the peer educators are going to brainstorm, brainstorm with some teachers and staff about the girl, boy and girl signs that are engraved for, engraved outside of the built, school building. Um, because we, and we wanna take it down because we wanna make things a little bit more, um, like, gender neutral. And what the peer educators are gonna do next is, um, the peer educators will start by going to different classrooms and, well, in presenting our other slideshow on, yeah, so the peer educators will give a presentation on gender identity in all fifth grade classrooms, and all the fifth graders will be able to join the peer educators if they're interested, and then the peer educators will be able to adapt their presentation to make it more age appropriate for other grades and younger, then we'll present it to the whole school, so. Yeah, and that was my part.
So we know you have a lot on the agenda this evening, and we wanted to save just a few minutes for any questions you might have. We also have a couple other educators joining us this evening, our school social worker Alex Share and classroom teacher Ashley Pelangi. But the, the students would be super excited to answer any questions you might have at this time.
So, I have one question, what, probably a couple of questions. One is, has, has something changed with bathroom assignments, or are you proposing a change? I'm a little unclear on that.
Um, well, we're more of, like, so, we really want a new change in the school, like, a change for some children that feel as if they have, they're not, like, they don't use the pronouns that they were assigned at birth, like, for me, I feel that way, and for me and some other kids that they can relate, they have had trouble, like, figuring out where to use the bathroom, or, like, anything like that, I had trouble with that, too.
I'm wondering if, to further answer that question, if I own or one of the other two students wants to talk about the initial change that you worked on with Mr. Alex and Ms. Ashley this fall.
So, um, oh, sorry, Shontal, were you gonna say something? Okay, so, um, I didn't really understand that question very much, but I did wanna answer it, so like, I didn't, like, really understand how, how that was worded, but, um, so, yeah.
So, do, do you have, do you have non-binary bathrooms at Bell Sherman now?
Um, yes, so, we made them gender neutral or gender inclusive because we wanted everyone to feel, like, safe, because I know, like, me, when I went into the boys' bathroom, I didn't feel very, um, like, comfortable because I didn't like how I was supposed to go into that certain bathroom. But before that, we did have a gender neutral bathroom, but it was downstairs and it wasn't upstairs because we are in the upstairs classroom, so we couldn't really go down there.
Yeah, um, there's, like, so we made the bathrooms up near the fifth grade classrooms, gender neutral, so like, boys and girls can use it. Some people aren't comfortable using the, like, um, old opposite gender bathrooms, but that's okay, they can do that. Um, but, yeah, so, all the, most of the other, well, most of the other bathrooms in the school are still all just boy and girl and stuff, and I, sometimes I, I just always still use, um, the girls' bathroom even though I don't really identify as a girl's, as a girl anymore, because I kinda feel like, um, people will just tell me that, oh, you're a girl, you have to go in the girls' bathroom and stuff, and it would kind of make me uncomfortable. So that's, that's why I feel like we should try and change the other ba- bathrooms to just be gender neutral.
Yeah, and like, I know there may be some people that don't feel comfortable using the gender neutral bathrooms, like, um, for some people, they wouldn't feel comfortable of going, like, after COVID, people might not feel comfortable with going into a bathroom with, like, a different gender as them, like, they may not feel very safe. So, like, we're gonna, we're gonna try to make things a little bit more comfortable for everybody else if some people don't feel safe or comfortable in the gender neutral bathrooms after COVID.
I don't have a question, but I wanna thank you all for presenting to us today, as well as being so courageous and brave and honoring who you are and who you wanna be, and also thinking about your peers and what makes everyone feel safe, so thinking about inclusion, which ICSD is always pushing for and love, meaning accepting people for who they are and who they wanna be, so I just wanna thank you all for pushing for those changes and being brave, because it's really hard even when you're an adult, let alone when you are a child, so I appreciate each of you.
So, I knew about the changes that you initiated a couple months ago because I was visiting at Bell Sherman and Mr. Tomasic told me about what was going on, he was very excited and I was very excited. It was, Ayana mentioned that one of the things that you're looking to see if you can make changes in are the engraved boys and girl signs on the outside of the building. Some people may not be familiar with the, the Bell Sherman building, but on one side of the building, there are two entrances, and it goes back to when the building was built, and maybe somebody can tell me what year that was, but there was an entrance that was labeled and it's engraved in, in stone, boys and girls, so.
Literally etched in stone.
Etched in stone, um, and I, I wondered about, you know, the history of that and, and what you could find out about why it was that way, and then also I'm curious about what you're talking about, about how that might be changed.
Go deep.
Yeah, so, I don't really know how that would be changed, because, like, it very obviously engraved, so, um, like, we're not quite sure how it could be changed, but, like, first we could try at least making a giant sign or, like, paper sign or, like, a banner that would say, that would cover it up, or just take it down. I don't quite know.
I, I will say our fourth graders are diving into this topic almost as we speak, so we, we have some amazing fifth graders presenting this evening, and actually I'm meeting with Mr. Bryman and Ms. Verba tomorrow, just to, to talk a little bit about some preliminary ideas that the fourth graders have come up with, so, uh, more to come regarding that, so.
Um, I'd just like to jump in as, as a, one of the historians here to say that that was a commonplace architectural feature of late 19th and early 20th century, um, school buildings, if anyone ever drives by the Whitney Point High School, the boys and girls' sides are displayed prominently, it's a historical relic. I'm assuming, Mr. Tomasic, that you no longer practice sending students into those doors by nominal gender and probably never have. Um, that might be a question for the facilities committee about, I mean, this is, this is, I'm not sure how old the original Bell Sherman building is, but I'm actually surprised that it was, it is that old that, um, that that still have, have been practiced, I basically thought that any of the school buildings still had that feature, have been turned into condos by now.
We're talking 1922, and I think.
Okay, thank you, Rob, that, yep, that, that would be, so that is a historical relic, and, um, one might have to talk to facilities about slinging words, sandblasting, it's certainly not anything that has been practiced in any of the lifetimes of anyone on, uh, the board or the administration.
Well, thanks, that, since I know the chair of facilities to me, we'll, we'll get on that, but Theo, I think, uh, Theo, go ahead.
Um, so I wanted to add on to what Ayana was saying, um, so, I, I have one idea, it just might, like, we're probably, it will take a lot to do this, but like, maybe, like, we could try, some, like, somehow, like, get pavement and we can, like, put pavement over the, the, the lettering, so it looks like it's just like, like, it was just plain, because we can put pavement over it, because that's pavement, right? Is that pavement, like how it's engraved?
engraved in concrete, but yes.
Oh, well, yeah, but can, like, somehow, like, cover it up with, like, some, like, is it, yeah, concrete?
Concrete.
Somehow cover, cover it up, and like, let it dry, and then it'll be, like, all covered.
Theo, I think the amazing thing about having this on a facilities committee agenda is that we can be extremely innovative in how we approach it, and similar to what Dr. Wazle said, the exact same thing happens on other school buildings within the Ithaca City School District, some that no longer exist, like the Dewitt Mall, you will find the exact same thing built within the same 10-year period, so without question, something that we will explore, not explore, that we will find the solution to fix and change, and to be much more affirming. I will also say thank you for your talk with us this evening, this is an issue that has great relevance to me and the work that I do and try to do at Ithaca College of having conversations about how do we get away from the gender binary. Personally, I try not to use the language gender neutral, because for me, that seems to be dismissive, but much more gender inclusive, or as my spouse says to me, why don't we just call them bathrooms, right, and so maybe we have to think about some other ways to make this happen, but we will also take a look at signage, we will find the ways that are, again, the most welcoming, the most inclusive, the most affirming. We've been having this conversation as a school district, it has not moved fast enough, I, I will honor that, but I also want folks to know that we, this is a conversation that we've been having, so, Mr. Ainsley, I look forward to this being on one of our facility committees sometime in the near future, thank you again, appreciate you all.
Can I just say that the best signs I have seen in the entire community on this issue are up in College Town, that's a new College Town Bagels. Their restroom signs say whatever, just wash your hands twice.
There you go, we, so, um, any, well, here we go, Andrew, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I wanna say, I, I don't really have any, you know, questions on this, but, um, this is a really, a really great thing that you're doing, I feel like very often there's kind of the perception that any kind of self-realizations about gender or sexuality happen at the, at the earliest, you know, in, in early high school, and, you know, not until the end of high school, when in reality, you know, these are happening throughout anyone's life at any point regardless, um, so, you know, just a huge amount of respect to you all for bringing this up and taking action to, to do it yourselves, um, at your school, so, a lot of respect.
I'd like to echo Andrew's sentiments on that, I think we're doing this amazing, uh, I love how openly and confidently people talk about this subject, I think it's, I think that's kind of a testament about how it's really never too early to start learning about these things, to start talking about these things, and really kind of breaking down these oppressive systems that have built up over hundreds of years. And I would also like to say that, um, I'm really, really glad that they're now, uh, bringing this to bathrooms in some elementary schools, that we are also pushing for there to be more gender inclusive bathrooms at the high school, there have been a few, uh, dated corners over the last few years, but we're also pushing for, for more of them as well, so, really, really cool to see you guys.
And, uh, I watched Bell Sherman, I was in Miss Sasha's class, and, and that school didn't do very well, and I felt very accepted there. And so for more students to feel that way and being able to kind of grow and be able to have a school represent the people that go there, it's incredible.
Excellent, anyone else, other than, thumbs up, great job, folks.
Um, so about, like, that sign that said, like, whatever, wash your hands, um, I think, is it like the, I forgot the name, but, um, I know another restaurant, it might be the same restaurant, but our friends own it, like, um, some of my friends, um, their mom and dad own it, I think, yeah, they own it, um, their names, I forgot their names, but I know that, um, but, yeah, they own it, I think, and so, yeah, I just wanted to say that.
Again, the restaurant specifically, Theo, is, um, College Town Bagels, up in College Town, they moved to a new location inside of one of Cornell's dorms, actually looks like the Bat Cape, so you might find it pretty cool, but, yeah, I thought those signs just got to the heart of it, start playing games, whatever, people are fluid, just wash your hands.
Thanks, Eldred, thanks, Theo, thanks, everybody, and Ayana and Shontal, everyone, and, and Mr. Tomasic, you too, right, and, uh, anything else, Jeff, are we good? Excellent, all right, good, thank you, thank you, Bell Sherman, thank you, guys, thank you. Can we stop now? I mean, it's, do we have to do real? Emily, do we have any public comments in the works or somewhere? I think we've had nice interactions so far. It's almost Christmas, we don't, any, we're glad to hear from anyone, uh, if they wish to speak, but that lets us go right to student reps, and since I have semi-left-handed, I would like to start with Alex, so, go ahead.
All right, well, um, we have, um, a lot of, I don't know, a couple updates. First off, we are going to be having our winter solstice, our solstice day, which is gonna be the 23rd, yeah, 23rd, um, and it's going to be a kind of an acting event, and we're gonna have, have a kind of a family group lunch, which is just kind of a small group, like, of students and teacher, um, which is a, a recurring thing right here. And so we're gonna have a lunch in that group, and then it is going to be some kind of open time with, with activities and just for kind of school bonding. So, winter solstice day, solstice lunch has been a long-running tradition since the school's been founded. It's nice, it's on the solstice, it's not, you know, affiliated with any, you know, specific religion or belief system, it's just, you know, it's a solstice, it's a human holiday, which is a word that we use. And it's a, it's a very, you know, it's a tradition that we've very tried very hard to keep alive, and it's along with our various traditions, it's a good way of making sure that, you know, students of the school have a community they can fall back on and just do what they know.
Uh, and then we also recently, our most recent, was on our review, uh, it's a place for students to do public art and kind of express themselves and live graffiti in other parts of the building. And it recently, it's been transferred, and the ownership kind of was under our custodial staff, and now they are our teacher, and recently it's become a group of students, kind of a committee of sorts, yeah, an actual committee of students that now will kind of facilitate the room, decide what's being painted over, what's deemed, it's, I mean, I'm surprised that.
Yes, I believe the language was safe.
Yeah.
They were like, really out of it on, like, the room being like a safe space for all students, you know, because that's the whole point, right, with shifting ownership, because it was becoming unsafe or, like, not as school appropriate, well, but we've definitely regulated it, yeah.
Yeah, and ICS just, or, uh, the running lab program under our, say, grant that now they're working on building, there's a after-school system that will help students kind of prepare for life after this, they're done with their education here, and we're really excited for that system to start, you know, probably, I mean, it will benefit a lot of students, and we're really happy to have it, and then we have a production, which is.
That's true, um, we have, this one's been taken a little bit to get off the ground, especially because our, so historically, our theater, our theater company has been run entirely by students, uh, because of COVID, we, um, kind of, the, the, the knowledge of how to make productions kind of passed on, you know, for the generations of, of juniors and seniors, uh, because of COVID, it kind of, it, it, it broke the line. So we've had some difficulty starting that up, we've had some excellent help from, you know, from Natty Simpson, as well as a few other people who, kind of names up, but our first production is going to be Little Shop of Horrors, which is gonna happen during February, um, which is a fun little musical, if you're not familiar with it, about a killer plant, and then there's going to be live shows, there's going to be a Shakespeare show during the kind of late spring, towards the end of the school year, um, so it's happening, there's a, I, you know, there's a lot of, you know, sixth graders and younger students involved with that, which is really good to see, a lot of kind of new talent in the, uh, in the group, which is always, always nice, so, that's gonna be happening mid-February, and then Shakespeare plays, and everything.
And it's our Alex accepted.
Thank you, thank you, is it gone, please?
So, December is quite a busy month for our students, um, the ICS orchestras another first-in-person concert with crowds, depending on if you can, this past Wednesday, it was great success, it was amazing to perform, but we're proud again.
Um, the bands have their winter concert tomorrow and the pirates have theirs next Tuesday. Um, our meetings uh with this ensemble are also going well and we're currently discussing uh and helping plan possible schedule changes for next year. Um, in addition, uh, the seniors of IHS have submitted a few applicants here back from the colleges this week. Um, including the brand new 52, the Cornell Plaza twenty twenty six. Um, as such, I just, I'm starting to tense recently, uh, but hopefully that will be just so as soon. As many seniors will never post high school plans finalized, or at least we don't feel hard for writing a application.
Um, students are also noticing that the students and bus drivers are spread thin throughout the district. I would like to know if there's been any progress in storing up, in storing up staff sources. Um, and I would point out, uh, seniors are also facing back from early detention colleges to all colleges. And as a result, this semester is an especially stressful time for upperclassmen given the demands of the app, of the application process. Um, as a result of these college decisions, mental health among seniors is especially low. Our mental health among IHS students is also low throughout the school as a result of neighboring school closures. And rising COVID cases throughout the district and 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 at the whole.
Um, so this morning, um, I think the high school students, I was receiving an email from Dr. Brown. Um, informing that that there would be, they would be no longer getting COVID updates uh every time there was a positive case at the high school. On the same email was sent out to parents, I think the night before. Um, instead, a link uh to the New York State COVID report card will be sent out weekly. In cases will be updated onto the ICC website, uh, also weekly. Um, the email stated that this change was for the purpose of uh streamlining communications. Um, but the other student reps and I believe for this one's act of inter-COVID communication throughout the district. Um, COVID case numbers and related information needs to be as accessible as possible. Um, especially with the rise of cases in Potters County and the closure of schools, uh districts nearby like um Lansing and Dryden. Um, emails uh where the new cases were easily accessible were extremely helpful for both students and families. And streamlining, um, to my understanding is making something more efficient, um, but changing the system. Um, updating students and families is just adding another hurdle um to access this vital information. Um, it also feels like during this time of money, it's, um, especially with the rising cases. Um, there's kind of like a lack of transparency about cases that um can be seen. So, yeah.
Like Aton said, as we all know, COVID cases are rising rapidly at Cornell Shippstown with over five hundred positive cases. Almost eight hundred cases in Potters County, um, late to high school shutting down. Uh, we have also noticed a significant rise in COVID cases added to the school as well. Um, students are worried that we will have to go back online and are concerned over what we perceive as lax policy for contractors. We have a couple of questions that would leave students excited. Um, first, what is the protocol or plan for going back online? Um, would there be like a certain threshold for the number of positive cases? Um, what are we doing to prepare for over the case scenario, a transition to online learning? We were also notified that surveillance testing has stopped. Uh, how are we getting back on track with this? We know that it's incredibly difficult to plan for scenarios that may be out of our control, such as. A forced closure to track the COVID cases, but we like to emphasize how important we feel it is to be welcome there for any possibility. Um, also considering that this situation is now not on campus. In order to avoid pathfinding, to make sure that IHS is able to operate the best, technically, other challenging circumstances, we must plan.
And Dr. Brown, I'm sure you're probably gonna address the attendance business, et cetera. So, well, uh, we're gonna address all your questions. Carrie Burke is sitting behind you. Um, so, well, uh, so let's get to all that. Shortly, but uh, or responses at this point from anyone about anything? Andrew, you wanna?
Oh, yeah.
Andrew's gonna respond, so there you go.
I just wanna say, you know, on behalf of the three of us, uh, and I guess we agree fully with everything that you guys just said, so.
And I'm sure it's much harder to get into Cornell than it was when I. But that was a long time. Congratulations.
Much harder.
Nathan, we'll just, um. Might as well, uh. Uh, if uh, if we could just, uh. I think it's important to address all this in detail, right? So, responses, if we can just get to the consent agenda. Because while I have a form, so we get to vote it on, personal report, et cetera. To hire another custodian or two and things like that, Bob, I think, and another bus driver, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, so let's just, it's not a lot of consent and then we go right to uh. That answering questions, but.
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thanks, Pat. And it's all been a group of reviews approved. Uh, viewed by folks, uh, so. Any questions? Chris, uh, I guess Chris, you're still there. Chris, everything's fine, right? As far as finance, right?
Pretty, uh, there's, the only thing that's really on there is the special aid funds for Tompkins Community Action for Head Start. Um, you know, just moving funds around for teachers' assistance and support. Uh, but it's really, uh, not a lot to this consent.
Yep, boil plate, okay. Uh, who seconded? Emily, if we could do the roll and then I'll move on.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Tom, do you have them?
Yes.
Aaron Croyle?
Yes.
Audrey Harris?
Yes.
Napoleon Faith?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Joshua Woslin?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks. We uh, we have plenty of forum and so Dr. Brown, superintendent of reports, announcements, et cetera.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Jackson. I'm gonna invite Mr. Burke up to the table. Um, and as she comes up, I'll uh use an initial frame. And if we intend, intend to talk about COVID protocol, it's a transition tonight anyway. So, thank you all for your questions. And for your feedback. We've gotten a lot of feedback. And I will know, uh, yeah, I'm looking forward to answering the question for the folks in this room and our young people. And I'm currently getting questions from folks on CNN and MSNBC, because I guess all the organizations are making decisions. That are, that are being communicated and folks have questions about what we're doing here. So, and the decisions we're making, the shifts we're making, have been informed by a lot of feedback. And frankly, the folks making the decision, myself, as Verba and others, are doing this twenty-four seven, seven days a week. So, much of what we decided isn't just something we decided without a lot of thinking and without a feedback. There's a, there's a need to share information and then there's a need to share information and ask for some actions. What we've learned over the last couple of weeks. And this has been informed by a significant amount of feedback. Every time we send a letter, which is often about a positive case. We then need to follow it up. Your child, your family, maybe your close contact. Then we need to follow it up with another letter saying we need to do something. What we have learned is that the significant amount of information coming out. Is causing such significant confusion that families are turning off completely. They want to hear from us when they need to take an action. That is consistent with traditional approach of the communication that we've taken anyways. And we've heard that feedback loud and clear. So, what I said is, we were doing what we were doing to streamline communications. It is for just that. We are streamlining it for the families who have demanded we do so. And so that we can get quick reactions and actions from families that we are attempting to do, contact tracing and other things. Yes, we, we certainly use the term transparency. Uh, from my perspective, we have done a lot. That is just the feedback. You've been too transparent. You've given us too much information. That we're losing it. There are federal and state requirements as far as our transparency. So, we are posting the information that we are required to post in an online portal, accessible to everyone. So, if there are additional ways to be more transparent, please share with us. But I gotta tell you, the decision around. How often we communicate, one, I, I did, I talked to a lot of folks in our region and around the state. We're one of the few districts that sends out those letters, and but I think we're the only one. Everyone else, long ago, people were deciding to do it only once a week or sending folks to the portal. We were the ones who were saying, we're gonna do this often and, you know, is it a lesson learned? Maybe you could have continued to do that before we got into the kind of double-digit case counts that we're now experiencing. So, please note that without a significant amount of thought, that kind of transition wasn't something that we just started all of a sudden. But we were getting so much feedback from families that we had to do something different. And that's what we decided to do. And surveillance testing, yes, I think you saw the earlier communication about the company we were working with, pausing one back implementation. That's back up and running and we have started that as of today, right, or tomorrow?
It'll be this week, yeah.
This week.
We're finalizing logistics.
Getting the bag going this week. I, I probably took too much.
No.
Any other things I leave out here?
I was wondering, Dr. Brown, would you mind me sharing an example around communication?
Please, yeah.
So, for example, I'm a parent in the district to students, one at the elementary, one at the secondary level. And so when there was a case in the building, parents in U S secondary students, uh, parents in particular were getting an email and a robocall. Well, as we've, as the health department's become incredibly busy, they've given us some latitude around confirming vaccination status for students. Confirming that they are symptom-free, because when we can do that, kids can come to school the next day. But imagine you're a parent with kids in multiple buildings and there are cases in those buildings and your child's close contact. So, you may be getting as many as two, three, four potentially robocalls and emails. And that notifying you about the case. And then another one saying, hey. We understand that your child's vaccinated. Can you just confirm they're symptom-free? Can you screen them for the symptoms so they can come to school tomorrow? We understand your child is not vaccinated or don't have record of it. Can you share a screenshot in Excel to your cast? Can you confirm that they are symptom-free so they can return? So, the efforts that we're making around communication are designed to. Uh, enable parents to respond, to take action and also to have students return to school the next day. Because originally, the health department was the one to do that work, to follow up with individuals to confirm that they are fully vaccinated. And that they are symptom-free. But based on where we are, uh, in our current situation, we adopted to, to take on those responsibilities. Again, uh, to avoid uh breakages and obstruction, et cetera.
Um, why can't we send out a weekly email or robocall to notify families of cases that we?
I'm sorry, I can't.
So, why can't we send out a weekly email or robocall to notify families of cases that we?
We certainly can look to do that, but again, we're, we're, we're constantly looking to be responsive to whatever the needs are. So, if that's something that we find that people are looking, they're having trouble finding it on the website, they're having trouble finding the New York State portal, we can certainly look to do that.
I mean, it, it, it seems to me that if people are looking for, I mean, the, the way we have been doing it. Is, you know, robocall plus email to, plus like an email plus everyone. And it, you know, it does seem like a lot of, of communication. I feel like cutting off the flow of communication completely. Um, might be a bit of an extreme step. Uh, maybe some kind of a middle ground where. There is some kind of communication, you know, maybe a weekly communication or maybe a, a bi-weekly communication, something like that. Um, but not, no communication unless you need to do something. Uh, but then, again, I also don't know what exactly what it's like, so I could be.
I would agree with you, because I think that we aren't at the point where it's already is fair enough for us not to get their request whatsoever. I think it makes sense to at least have some sort of verification, because it's still kind of serious stuff for, if a student has a case, then, like, people should be like. So, I think it makes sense to send out some of this sort of notification. I understand the excessive, it's.
Okay.
But I do think.
A clarifying question. The website is being updated.
Yeah.
There is a website that has all the information by school. So, we could simply send a communication out asking folks to check this website for your school information. Is that the kind of, I'm, I'm hearing an ask for information and that information is available daily. So, if folks need an alert or a reminder to go check out the information, that is something we can handle by sending a link. But please be clear, we are as a team managing this. We have to communicate to get some action immediately. And that communication stream is something that's a bit different from what I think I'm hearing from you all.
So, you're just questioning, or so you're looking for a numeric, okay, there were fifteen cases that the guy was, this week. This past week, there were fifteen cases, but you weren't contacted, so, so I'm, so is that helpful or is?
I think it definitely is. Um, I think that one thing. Um, especially that we kind of want to try to understand more, it's also how much of what the, the general strength around that's reflected in IHS as well. When we see cases rising and falling in our community nationwide, whatever it is. For now, for example, we want to know if IHS is being affected in the same way. Um, we, you know, if we see Cornell cases rising rapidly, we want to know. Is IHS, you know, are there more cases than IHS right now? Do I need to, like, now be extra, extra, extra safe? Um, you know, all of us already wear our masks daily, try to minimize product with the people. But we're still in a school with four, fourteen hundred kids. Um, and uh, I think that. Knowing where we stand on that, um, is really helpful, both for students psyche and also for just kids, like. Continuing to be safe.
Um, just along the line of, you know, what, what is the trend in our schools? Uh, Grace mentioned that uh she believed that there were significant rising cases in Ithaca High School. Now, I get all the same emails that people have been getting. I haven't seen that. So, what is the, the status say at Ithaca High School?
Um, so, right, it's on a need-to-know basis, right? If you've like been in the vicinity of this person or something like that at this point in time, right? Um, yeah, because I've heard this from like going through the hallways at our school or whatever. I like, been like in contact with this person for more than like three minutes or whatever. Then you get like anyhow, then you get like all of these robocalls, then you have to go get tested if this, that, and the third. Correct.
Yeah, the communications are designed, as we were talking about, streamlined, to focus on those who are identified as close contacts. To prompt them to respond, provide information, to test to be, to be free, et cetera. And to, and to enable them to make decisions about whether they want to go and get tested.
And lawyer, we have not seen a cluster or some kind of outbreak yet in the high school or any other school.
Right. I mean, a lot of the emails I'm getting, it's like one case here, one case there. The last I saw at Ithaca High School, maybe in the past week, had three. So, it's not a significant surprise.
No different from truly independent.
Um, I really, I really like the idea of just like have it definitely as accessible as possible. I understand, obviously, hearing about the robocalls, like, I think my mom gets uh two robocalls from two different schools. So, that is something that I totally feel is excessive. Um, and maybe if that link could just be sent out, if it's updated, is there any way for it to be updated, like, more frequently? Weekly, because I know, I, I don't know, for me, that just seems like a longer period of time. Um, and we can also, uh, to interact with our administration, so we have this feature on Canvas, um, the, I don't know, like. Announcement, speaking, like, announcement.
We can do something to learn, I'm on, right, the website, learn, and the screen.
The, the link too that we're referring to is the state website. So, oh, yes, there you go.
Yeah, so like right now, it took me like multiple open searches to find it. Um, so, I, I, I'm glad it'll be made.
And in addition to data on, on cases, it includes data on testing, both screening and so forth. So, all of the, it's, it actually includes more information than what our, what our correspondence.
And Emily, uh, Nicole, Sean, folks online, uh, well, I can't see you anymore, but uh, if you're still there. Nicole, Sean, questions, comments?
Dr. Frisley, Brable, you had your hand up for a second. Go after you.
Yeah, I just wanna um reinforce what I understand the recommendation would be from our students is to have access to information. And so, uh, that transparency can be dealt with on a number of occasions. And I can tell you, as a caregiver. And I can tell you, as a caregiver who receives regular notices of positive cases in our school building, um, but doesn't require me any action, is something that I've had to work through. And then at the same time, when there was a case of me having to take some action because of an additional situation, it still took four days for me to be contact traced, and so from the state, right? And so in some regards, what we are doing as a school district is actually far more proactive than what the process has been statewide, because you will get contacted usually from someone within the, the school district. So the process is messy at best. Uh, I want to remind folks that again, we're, we're in a pandemic, and I can also say that at no point in time do I, as a faculty member, get informed about students who may be, have tested positive within my classroom. I may see the dashboard, but I don't get information about particular students as well. So there's a lot of work here to work through when I, but I say all that in this is to say, what I hear is that what we want is information. And I'm sure we can find ways to make sure that information is available. Um, it doesn't necessarily need to be an email or a robocall every time there is a positive case at a building that may not impact my child.
Well, Nicole.
I was literally just gonna say the same thing that Dr. Everly Bradwell shared. Um, as someone who has three children in the school district, um, two in one building and one in another building, and as a board member, I get several emails about the same issue. And I will say that those emails, A, cause me anxiety, and B, sometimes get lost in the shuffle of work and personal emails. And in the instance, when my kids had been in contact with someone who had tested positive, I had deleted the emails because I had just gotten to the practice of being emailed so many times that it was hard for me to even decipher between when it was impacting my child and when it wasn't. So I personally appreciate the streamlined process. However, I understand that people have different modes and needs for communication. Some folks like to be over communicated with, while some folks only want to know when they need action. So I can appreciate us needing to find the middle ground. I think the, the resources are available. Um, however, how we disseminate and how often we disseminate that information, I think we can have more conversation about.
Anyone listening at home or wondering, the link to that website is in the letter that we're referencing. So it doesn't require a Google search or anything like that in the letter you're reading about the, the link to that website.
So, so I'd just like to add that, um, while I was walking the tiny dog this evening before, before this meeting, I had a nice conversation with a neighbor who has a child in elementary school, a child in middle school, and a child at the high school. And, um, her reaction was she just cannot take all, all the robocalls and emails anymore. Um, I understand that when you are a student at the high school, you may think, oh, well, if we get a number, there's fourteen hundred kids at the high school, but when you say, you know, the high school is really, really big. And if you say fifteen cases or three cases, and then what you're really trying to do is figure out whether you came in contact with one of those people and what you have to do. Uh, you know, we cannot give you that level of granular information about someone else's health history. And when you get down to a school that has two hundred kids or three hundred kids, and there's, there's one case, um, that verges on, um, you know, identifying individuals and what their illness is. And that is not something that we can really do. So for, to answer the question of being extra, extra vigilant, I would say from here on, if you haven't been already, there is not a day that you should not be extra, extra vigilant. I'm home tonight because I'm being extra, extra vigilant instead of coming in like I planned to at five P M. Um, we are, we are in a very critical situation as a county. Um, it is, my understanding, it is largely confined to college students who do not have a lot of contact with, um, school age students, but they certainly have contact with the community. And the best thing that you can do is remain masked, be vaccinated, and if you're old enough to get a booster shot, have your parents get you a booster shot. And there's, there's no way to make it better.
Uh, Carrie, if you just, uh, just give me, uh, just, uh, going back to the testing, and there were issues with companies, but well, just to clarify where we were on testing and what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, so we, um, the lead agency that was providing testing through federal funding, through Health and Human Services, decided to switch intermediaries, intermediaries, the agency in the previously was Affinity, now it's a new company called Concentric. What they do is they manage logistics for testing, they ship us supplies. Um, they operate a platform through which we register tests and through which reporting is conducted. And for whatever reason which they didn't disclose to us, they decided to move away from the affinity vendor to the new vendor. And so we've been involved in onboarding processes and data validation processes. The good news is that anyone who's consented through the Thanksgiving break does not need to reconsent. Those have been uploaded into the portal. Um, the process remains the same in terms of what's involved with testing. We'll put two samples from each individual, one designed for pool testing, and then the other designed for individual testing, should the pool be positive. Um, we haven't heard any differences with respect to the recording timeline, we're still anticipating it's going to be twenty-four to thirty-six hours. Um, so really, many of the mechanisms around testing haven't changed, but the, the players have in terms of the intermediary.
Right, and when was testing interrupted?
Testing was interrupted right before we returned from Thanksgiving break. So we tested through, it was the twenty-third, um, and then it was paused by the company right before we got back.
Right, and so, starting up, maybe this is, perhaps, okay. Uh, my reading, I, I came across, I thought the affinity went out of business, or they just don't do this. They just don't do that, they, yeah, that's what I was. Uh, I was wondering if that was something that was servicing us, so, yeah, very good. So, um, so we're gonna start testing this week, and testing will be available through next Thursday, right? And then we're off for winter break, and then we're gonna be testing, obviously, all, next semester, I mean, we're.
We'll be testing you definitely, yes.
Exactly, and, uh, and when that provider decides not to, it'll be a different one. So there will have to be some, some way to fill in for it, so we'll continue testing. And, uh, and Dr. Brown, we do, uh, you know, judging by the amount of, uh, cases that we have, and it's been proven over and over again that, uh, where, where folks are being exposed, frankly, it's not in schools, it is home, it is on the weekend, it is at a party. It is typically elsewhere, the best place to be frankly is in school. Um, and having, maintaining that routine, and Dr. Brown, I certainly believe, and, uh, you know, I'm not gonna count the dates because the dates slide by pretty quickly anyway, but we will be in school until next Thursday.
Yes, sir, and to note, the school districts in our area and the region and the state that are closed have not been because of an outbreak or a spreading of the virus. It has been because of operational concern and staffing issues. A shout out to staff in the school district, their efforts and their commitment to be in person, to follow the protocols, is keeping this small city school district open, period, and we need to thank them every time we see them. We are here, we need to be here, there are families who depend on us to be open each day for a number of reasons, including teaching and learning. So it is our, is our hope, and that we are staying open each and every day we can. And a shout out again to the folks, and a special shout out to Amanda Vermaer, Carrie Burke, and the folks who are doing this through the weekends, into the night, and up first thing in the morning, it's like a perpetual snow day, and before the pandemic, I used to eight snow days. And it seems like we've been on a snow day for two years now, of all night, doing this work, so, anyway, yes, sir, we hope to be open on next week.
Hope you all, yeah. Um, I can care, and, uh, Grace, going to contingency plans, sure, hey, we, uh, we did, we did remote learning, as you can call it that, it's a, it's a failed system. Uh, it's not something that, uh, we expect to do. Uh, we were certainly not gonna do hybrid learning, um, but yeah, if, uh, if we have to, there will be, there are organizational dynamics, dynamics in place to, uh, to go back to providing meals to folks that think are not gonna get their meals unless they are at school, there are all those things that are in place to make that happen. Um, and.
Yeah, good question, because, yeah, we have planned, we have done it, if needing to go remote overnight with a couple of days notice, we can do that. It's not ideal, whenever we do it, it's not the best scenario, but we have got it, we have plans to do so.
Um, is there like a threshold of?
No.
Well, there have to be, uh, I don't know, we've, uh, we have a new governor in the state, it would have to come from the state to, uh, if somebody's gonna close down this district, it's gonna have to come from either, uh, a governor or the President of the United States. Uh, we will, uh, enough is enough, uh, we were, uh, we've been there, done that. It is damaging in so many, many different ways, far exceeding, uh, the, what we're doing as far as wearing a mask, so. Um, so, um, we, uh, we will never voluntarily, proactively say, well, jeez, we just can't, we're, we just can't do this, that we don't do that, we're not Lansing, we're not Dryden, we are Ithaca, and so we, we are different. And so we will be here, and, uh, schools will be open when they should be open. If at some point, uh, somebody says, okay, we're shutting down this whole world again, we're gonna shut down the economy, you can't go to work, you can't go to school, um, they tried that, it, you know, it just doesn't work.
Just to confirm, if we end up in a situation where IHS, where IHSD is forced to shut down, which at this point does seem like it could happen, we are hitting a new high, ultimate high for cases in our area in New York State. Um, we have the plan in place for it to be structured in place for it to be online and much more efficient than it is spring twenty twenty or fall twenty twenty.
Yes, yes, we, we've transitioned to online before we can do that, yeah.
But to, but Adam, to your point, uh, in a far better way, um, online, sitting at a computer all day as a, as a, as an educated, as an educator, or as, as a student, is it's not, that's not, that's no experience. It's so, I don't, I know, you can get it, I have two big screens I looked at all that. Uh, if I had to sit there, if that was my educational experience, that is, that is a failure.
Uh, I, I, I agree with you, and I think what we're just trying to do is ensure that if we end up in that scenario, that we can make it the, the best it can be.
Adam, if I can jump in real quick, um, sorry, Aaron, I see your hands, let me, let me stop for a second, then I'll respond.
Well, if you want to respond to Adam, and then I have several questions, so maybe it's best if you go first.
Right, so I'll be quick, right, we've watched what happened with Cornell today, we've experienced this at Ithaca College, we've experienced it with local school districts. Um, and Adam, I say this with great humility, no matter what our best plans are, there is no smooth transition to make this happen. It has a significant disruption to families, I'm one of those families that, uh, changes my workday completely. Um, and there's many other families, and as an educator, uh, to ask me one day to plan to be in person and the next day to be virtual and try to make my lessons virtual, um, it, it's gonna, it's, it's messy at best. So I understand the, um, I very much appreciate asking us, you know, to make sure that we have plans in place or protocols in place, which we do, and it's still gonna be a difficult transition, should that happen. Uh, the other, in terms of if we were have to shut down, um, quote unquote, or go virtual, right? If we'd have to have virtual education, there are a number of scenarios that could possibly make that happen, all of which we hope do not take, take, take place. Um, but, but I just wanted to make sure that we understand that it, it's a difficult transition, no matter what the best plans are.
Um, so a, a couple of questions to follow up here. So we're talking, I mean, I, I look at Lansing, and I know we're not Lansing, and we are Ithaca, but knowing their situation, I mean, they literally did not have enough staff because people are getting sick, and that is why they shut, right? Um, and so that is something that's out of our control, right? If teachers get sick, if teachers test positive, and we literally don't have enough staff, they're stretched thin as it is. So what do we do then if there just aren't enough people? Um, and so when we're talking about that, and we're talking, so, so that's one question, what do we do if we just don't have enough people? When we're talking about the plans that have been mentioned, I mean, what, I, I would love to hear a little bit more about plan, like, is there childcare? What about students with high needs who they cannot learn virtually? Do we have plans for that, and can we hear about that to ease the anxiety of families? Because it does feel inevitable that we might go virtual, maybe not permanently, but for, for a period, considering how much this is spreading, considering that Omicron is, is more transmissible and that COVID in general is airborne. And then my final question, considering that this virus is airborne, you know, I, I think that we should keep schools open. I think it is important, but what about the things that aren't as important? You know, we, and especially those high-risk extracurricular activities, you know, sports, even if you have a mask on, you're breathing, band concerts, choir concerts, we know that it can spread that way. We know that people don't always wear their masks over their face, they might pull it down to talk, they might pull it down to eat and drink, it is gonna spread. So do we have a, what are our contingency plans, and how are we gonna handle those higher-risk activities? Are we gonna think about maybe scaling back a bit as our community sees this huge, dangerous surge?
Thank you, Aaron, I'll, I'll try to address all the questions that I think I heard in here. Um, and if I missed one, please share that question again, and I'll try to answer, uh. There are multiple contingency plans, yet we also know that we would have to plan for something that we have never seen before. We don't know what will happen to our, we do know that, uh, what I would refer to as an operational close is if we don't have enough staff to man safely a building, we have not been in that place yet. And hopefully, we won't get to that place. That operational closing could like, and it looked like an entire building closing, or most of the building closing, and maybe having some support and classes for the most vulnerable or certain populations of young people. We now, two years in, we've seen different school districts, not only in our state, but all over the country, do different things based on the scenario they are in. So without knowing, it's hard to speak to a plan, for hypothetical, but now, without knowing exactly what we'd be dealing with, I can tell you that we will manage this to best meet student needs. But again, we are at, right now, open. Yes, we are monitoring the case counts, because case counts are still important for us in schools because of the ways which we are at this moment required to quarantine and isolate folks who are testing positive. That may be different from other narratives we will start to hear about hospitalization rates and some severe illness. Until the protocols change for schools, we are monitoring the case counts, which can have a significant impact on staffing, when it impacts bus drivers, teachers, administrators, and others. Again, as the cases rise, if they continue to impact our staffing issues, we will make adjustments, knowing that the worst-case scenario and last resort would be to close the building like we did in March thirteen, twenty, and twenty. Did I get all your questions in there, Aaron, is there another one?
No, and so I'm gonna go one at a time, um, because I think this is important, and I've had a couple of people message me as we've been talking. So first question would be, um, are we gonna consider stopping extracurricular, high, higher-risk activities because this virus is airborne? Such as sporting events, or are we gonna limit crowds at those events? Do we have any plans in place, given the rampant spread? Because, okay, it's Cornell has five hundred cases, but that still leaves hundreds more of cases that are community spread and, and many, many more that people aren't getting tested. So first question, higher-risk extracurricular activities, is, are we doing anything about that?
Us as an individual school district, no, right now, we're still playing, uh, the conversations, the emails. The conversations, the emails that are going around with our section and other schools in our region right now. If the section and the local school district participating and competing as part of the section make a determination to shut down higher risk sports and others, we will do so. But at this, at this moment, there are no plans to do that.
So no limiting crowds, no limiting anything. Okay.
We were already doing that.
We do that already. And also the health department has the ability to roll back activities in the county. So some of those decisions might occur at the county level if they thought they saw clusters emanating from those extracurricular events. Every week when we eat with them, one of the things we ask is, should we be doing something different? When we meet with the health department, we ask, should we be doing something different based on what you're seeing?
Okay.
I was at a basketball game the other night that the young athletes were wearing masks as they were playing. I would never wear a mask playing basketball. They were wearing masks. The, their. Folks essentially getting checked into, into the gymnasium, names are taken and, you know, but attendance is being monitored during the fall. There is limits on the number of attend soccer eventually that stood up a little bit as cases went down. So this is all being done with flexibility and the needs of the day and the needs of the students and the needs of community. But other.
Yeah, just like. L E C S or I can't go through I H S. They are locked.
Unfortunately. But that's, these are the steps that are being taken.
Thank you. That's useful. My next question is, so I'm looking at my notes here. So, I mean, we're talking about, you know, case by case basis, school by school, but you know. I have communications plans and all sorts of plans for the, for the work that I do. So when we talk about plans, I mean, knowing how widespread this is. Are we looking to send Chromebooks home every night? Are we looking to be ready to go virtual so we don't have to like scurry like we did in March twenty twenty? I recognize that we don't anticipate shutting for the rest of the year, but we could shut for a week, we could shut for several days. So are there plans to help our staff and our students transition to that in a way that would not be as stressful both on our students and our staff? And then I have, I have a follow up after that.
Yes. We've done this too. We've sent Chromebooks home on a Friday evening. When we've learned that we needed to shut down a building on a Monday morning. So we have protocols and plans to do this and we have done it with multiple schools over the past few years.
Okay, because I, I, I have three kids in school and they've never been sent home with a Chromebook. So I'm asking like, have, have we thought about sending them home on a daily basis? Because we can get best results at night, right? You don't, you know, we don't know if the next day they should be in school or not. Things can change like that. So, I mean, that's what I'm talking about.
Agreed. Yeah. Some Chromebooks aren't going home and definitely part of our instructional practices, practice. But if the Chromebooks are needed to keep instruction going, we do have plans to do so.
Okay. And then my, my last question, my last specific question is. When we're talking about planning, right? Because I know that Lansing is providing childcare for ages K through six. Since, you know, we're talking about parents who still have to work. So if we were to shut for three days or something, or one school were to shut for three days, do we have plans in place to provide childcare for children who can't be alone? So that would be, you know, younger children, but also students with disabilities who can't be alone. And then additionally, do we have plans in place to support students who are unable to learn virtually? Who either need a one-on-one aid or, or, you know, get nothing out of communicating through a Chromebook?
In recognition of the significant inconveniences it causes when we shut down. And noting that as a school district, we do not and cannot offer childcare at this time. That is different from other local school districts. And I was on a call today and part of what's helping ease this inconvenience in other school districts is they're offering childcare. And they're a licensed childcare provider to do so. We are not. So we do not have plans and cannot offer childcare. Again, reinforcing our need and system urgency around staying. And Mary, you heard that second question with about why to watch the board.
Yeah, if I could speak a little bit to the virtual learning plans that are in place, should a student with an individual education plan need, we need to go virtual. That they have those short-term supports so that that's a collaborative process. And right now we're encouraging families and caregivers to reach out to their case managers, the special education teacher, the educator for inclusion. If they have had to put that virtual learning plan in place and they wish to make an update, there's a piece of it that's not working. But those are, that's a collaborative continual process. And you're absolutely right. Some students do not respond well to. Teletherapy or speech services and it's not a helpful solution. So some of the other pieces have been, what are activities that can be sent home? As far as sending staff into homes for one-on-one support, that's not something that's part of the virtual learning plan.
I'm so sorry. No, I just, I just have a follow up on that. I mean, if we were to have a school close. For that, would, could there be a way that those students, we could have those students with I A Ps in classrooms in a way? With supports, like is, is there an idea to do that because they've been marginalized so greatly over the past year and a half? Like, I know from my own personal experience, none, none of that works for my son. And I, I know of a number of students who also that they, they get absolutely nothing from anything. Unless they are with someone and in some cases in a classroom. So is that an option for those students who have suffered so greatly over the last couple of years?
So I think, one, I want to acknowledge your question really highlights the importance and the gratitude I feel for our educators and all staff that are keeping our buildings open. Because closing that has significant effects on our most vulnerable students. And so making a plan for how are we going to support students accessing education? Should we be in a non-in-person learning situation? We'll do what we did last time. We'll look at, at case by case. We'll do our best to assess the situation, work with our community, what's possible, what's, what's the reality and what's not. And right now I just want to express a tremendous amount of gratitude. I get to be in schools and I am so grateful for all the staff that are.
How about one last question from anyone?
Rob, not a question, but a quick response. I continue to realize that we're in a, again, a moment of great uncertainty. And yet, at the same point in time, at the end of last week, when classes ended on both Cornell and IC campus. There was great concern about what was going to take place over this weekend. And if you take a look on social media, there are a number of events of large gatherings of students who are not masked. And so in some regards, some of this wasn't completely unexpected, even while we have a significant spread that's taking place. But there were conversations amongst faculty, there was conversations amongst staff. There was conversations among students who were trying to decide if they're going to go to a gathering or not. And so I say that in essence to say that this is not just something that's happened from nowhere. This happened, classes ended, people are exhausted, they wanted to get out, they did get out. And we are seeing the impact of then folks being at large gatherings with hundreds of people without masks on. And therefore we have, as people have said, right, super spreader events or super spreader parties that have taken place. So I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that as well. We're not in the regular class period and this happened. It happened at the end of class when people wanted to get out and maybe not make all of the best decisions. And it's partly why we're seeing it on both college campuses.
Thanks, Sean.
And just one last thing, as students in the district, you know, we want, we completely want to stay in school. We love school and we appreciate our teachers so much. And our, and staff, like they, they give us a flow. But something that I've been thinking about is if there does happen to be a COVID outbreak at the school or among teachers and staff. If we don't shut down and that does lead to kind of operational, like we can't operate because we don't have enough staff or we don't have enough teachers. Wouldn't it, once before that outbreak happens or if there are signs of outbreak will occur, isn't it? Would it not be better to go online before more teachers, staff and students are put at risk? So we can, we end up the same result, but fewer teachers end up with COVID and end up sick.
Thank you. Please note mitigating the spread and keeping people safe is what we think about all the time. So washing hands, mask, mask wearing, physical distancing, those are all layer protections that we're doing every single day. And yes, going online is yet another layered protection. It's just further down on the content. So we hope that there will be, there will never be an outbreak. And all things we're doing right now in this room, being hybrid, wearing masks, being physical distancing, it leads to that. And if we needed to have everyone be completely virtual, we would do that too. We just don't have that place. So I hate to use colors. I know we're the little red, we're not in red. We are in a yellow, I guess. And hopefully if we needed to transition to a different stage, we would do that, but not right now. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate all y'all's questions. So much.
You anticipated talking about this tonight. So I think that's.
I don't, I haven't known what it's like not to talk about it.
Yeah, so. It was good to, good to review. And we're. We're gonna just roll through, roll through some policies and we're not going to do committee updates because we're gonna save that till anywhere. If something update, I can, we're updated out for tonight. And Sean, you want to run through these policies and so we can let folks. Go on.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. I'm looking at board docs now and I don't see the policies listed. Maybe I'm at the wrong place. And so what I would recommend is that we table eleven point, I make a motion that we table eleven point one and eleven point two until our next board meeting.
Second by Morris, since Morris is on the policy committee.
Well, I also, I can't see, I don't, I can't see the policies either. But I was.
Where I was, I attended these policy committee meetings and I know them well, but I think we're good. And so that was seconded and we have. All right. We'll call the roll unless there's some objection to tabling, but you can vote against tabling, but. Yes.
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 Eldred Harris?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Patricia Wathlin?
I really wanted to go over them, but I'd be overruled anyway. So yes.
Really just trying to get through this policy book. We keep hunting on the, that's okay. Let a date and legal notice for public hearing for district-wide safety plan. Dan, do you want to just, we're gonna. Insight, Dan, anything that you want to share?
I mean, I had a presentation shared, but.
Do you have like a PowerPoint?
Yes. I could send it to you guys. Would that be?
I was actually kidding, but. Sure.
All right. Okay. Now we have to sit. And we just have to set the date, which would be thirty days.
Well, Dan, just to, just bring folks up to speed and board members to know. We're thirty days from when, thirty days to when, so.
Well, tonight I was, I was prepared to just do a brief presentation. Come in from the presentation. You can set it, you can set it for thirty days. And our next board meeting in January is a little bit outside of the thirty day. So that'd be a perfect date to schedule the public. Yeah.
But glad to, glad to have you give us an update on the safety.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we did away with policies. We're not going to do board updates. So that's cool. We need to get some.
I seem to have lost a little bit of an audience.
Well. They've been there for a while, so it's okay.
That's not me, no. That's all right. Well, thank you. All right. All right. So, you know, I'll try to be brief as possible, but you know, the pandemic itself is, it's created a lot of challenges, but it's also a time to examine and reimagine our safety plan. You know, while we're doing this, we know how much it's impacting our students and everyone in unprecedented ways. We don't want to recreate a plan that is oppressive. So we know this is an opportunity to create a more inclusive plan. So some of the best practices in our plan. And it's written in here. Our evacuation procedures, we have written in all sorts of distancing that happens. When we do a lockdown because of COVID. We don't need to hide, we don't need to hide in one area. We can, the teacher can provide an overview of the drill. And talk through that. And then also we added in the plan how important it is to communicate to families and how this can really help with planning and the supporting social, emotional health. If kids know that these drills are occurring before that they happen. All right. So, and over the last few years, we've, we've done some changing on when we contact law enforcement. You know, one of the things we, we added is a member check with the, with our superintendent or deputy. And if there's not an imminent danger of harm. You know, we don't, we don't have to call law enforcement. We can call parents and caregivers or any other supports, the, the student in crisis. Or whatever the situation may be. Additionally, of course, if you're in a, a real emergency or you need an immediate response, we want our principals and administrators to take action accordingly. So, and some of the other things we've added. You know, in our, in the last few weeks, especially learning from the event that happened in Key Heights. A lot of our teachers used resources from the National Association of School Psychologists. And one of the, one of these items that's in the safety plan is talking to children about violence. And, you know, we know how confused and frightened our children may feel. And this is really an opportunity to make them feel a sense of normalcy and a sense of security. As well as we know that these drills can be hard for many of our students. So. Yeah, I added another resource for students with autism spectrum disorders. And really looking at, you know, these drills can provide sensory disruption, changes in routine. And we really, we really want to make these drills less anxiety provoking for our students. One of the last things, the state had a memo last year where they asked all the district safety plans to include protocols for responding to declared public health emergencies. And so we've added a section here as well. And it talks a lot about staggered work, work schedules. If, if there's a closure, who handles the P P E? Also, what, what does the communication look like? And we have a robust, robust section that answers these questions. And then last but not least, in some of our last meetings and, and the events that we've gone through, I just wanted to kind of briefly go, go over. You know, a few of our drills, you know, a lockdown drill really is, it's if it, if it's the, excuse me. If there's an immediate threat of violence. That's really when this school should be secured. It can happen on the grounds. Or in the building, but that's when a school should go into a lockdown. It provides a time barrier if there's an intruder in the building. And then of course students are out of sight and are remaining silent. Shelter in place. Which is in the plan, of course. It's used when it's safer inside. And a lot of schools have used. it's safer inside and a lot of schools have used, uh, these drills for weather situations, uh, tornadoes or where, where it's, where there's something happening outside where the, the interior of the building is better and safer for the students. For the lockout, this would be if, um, to secure a school building's grounds, if there's a concern outside of the building, um, and, uh, that there, there's a lockout that happens. And the holding place is, um, holding place exists when there's something that's happening in the building. But it's, it could be, uh, a fight in the hallway, um, but it's, it's to keep students and staff away from an affected area in the building. And then last but not least, evacuation drill, uh, this is, um, this is if it's safer outside of the building. Uh, and this is also, uh, also known as our fire drills, um, but we, uh, you know, we, we, it can be used for a variety of di- different situations where students go to an evacuation site. All right, um, that's about as fast as I can get through a ninety page document. Yeah, yeah.
No, we appreciate it. It's been gone over in detail.
Yeah.
And the policy work sessions, which I certainly encourage folks to tune into. So, if the question, Sean, Moira, Pat, do you have anything to add to the safety plan?
No, Dan did a good job. I just want to reiterate that, um, going through and folks can take a look at the ninety-two page document. The purpose of the public hearing is for the community to give feedback, to ask questions, to make improvements. What we'd be voting on tonight is not an acceptance of the safety plan, would be to set the date for the public hearing. And then we would go forward from there about the safety plan. Um, and so, uh, the most recent events have informed, um, a good deal of the thinking. And I want to thank Dan, um, for the incredible work in that regard. Um, and I see that there's a question there, but I just want to put forth, uh, that, um, Tuesday, January twenty-fifth is a possible date for us to set the hearing and let's see what happens after that.
I, I just have a, a brief, um, question, comment. You, you mentioned that, you know, you put something in there for students, um, with, uh, ASD. And, you know, there, the, that applies to students, not just on the spectrum, but many, many students. It could be sensory processing, it could be a disability that doesn't even have a label. And I, I hope that maybe we can tweak that language and I'd be happy to help in any way that it's representative of all students who might have difficulty with these sorts of routines and whatnot.
Thanks, Sarah. Yeah.
Go ahead, uh.
Sorry, we missed a little bit of that, but, um, I know that this kind of information about like this protocol and like I said, it's, I know a lot of students are very curious about it. Um, so I'm wondering if any of you could send this presentation maybe to us so that maybe we can also reduce the students, um, students, uh, that, that really helps.
Sure. Ask, um, is there a forum where we could come and talk just to students watching a board meeting? Even, even if we sent it out, I'm wondering if they would.
We, we would love for that to happen.
Yeah, yeah, I can come, instead of just sending it out, it'd be great if I could.
Can y'all help with coordination?
Yeah, I could come and provide a brief presentation. I could, I could also make, yeah, yeah, I could make the video, that's right. Yeah. Why did I need that? No, actually, that's a great, that's a great idea because I, I did want to provide it.
Put it in the, Dan, Brian, and, and others are gonna come, do I just connect around a safety photo ball?
I heard murmurings of approval. I mean, that was, uh, that was, that was impressive, uh, so that was good.
Yeah.
So, uh, you're gonna do that?
Yes.
It's, uh, frankly, in, in policy work session, it's much better to talk about this than to.
Yeah.
Read this ninety-two page.
That's right.
Right.
I heartily encourage everyone to pay part. Sean just threw up, did not offer a date, so where do we go with that?
We have to, I mean, we set the date and then we, we advertise that it's, uh, yeah.
Wow, we have another hand from a board member still.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, Dan, I obviously have not read the ninety-two page, um, report or paper. Would you be able to tell me if in this paper, um, we define what imminent danger is in terms of when our staff contacts law enforcement?
We did try to, we did try to define that in some ways, um. I don't, I, honestly, I, I might have to get back to you on that, Nicole. I don't, I don't, I don't know if we specifically defined what imminent danger was, but.
I, I bring that up just because, as you know, there are plenty of educators across the country that are calling the cops on children for non-dangerous, um, reasons. So having that spelled out for our educators and su- supportive staff, I think, would be really helpful as we, as we talk about danger and what danger means to certain folks.
I, I think that's a great idea. And, you know, we're not approving it tonight. I'd be happy to take a stab at that language.
Yeah, and maybe, uh, and I, I know Sean and others, Dr. Brown, well, I was working on the code of conduct.
Yeah.
Maybe we use a common definition in both documents. Um, so instead of you working on a doc, maybe we work together within a couple of weeks to figure out what that would be defined as.
Okay.
Because I could see some problems. Thank you, Nicole. That sounds awesome.
And I would just add, Nicole, one of the conversations we're having, it's difficult, given the particular circumstances of a situation, but should a building leader have to connect with someone at central office before they make that phone call? Or connect with a colleague? So at least there is some conversation as opposed to just making it. And yet and still, there will be situations where that sort of time waits can't happen. And so, um, but we can look at the way in which the code of conduct and the safety plan can merge together. And the good thing that we can still set a public hearing and that could still be part of the development as we, as we move forward. It, it, it's a real conversation we've been having on the flip side of the code of conduct. So I would make a recommendation or a motion that we try to set the public hearing on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. The question becomes, should, um, I realize that we also have Legislative Advocacy Committee, usually before meetings or sometimes, um, curriculum, uh, but didn't know if five-thirty would be a good time for us to set. And if we need to extend beyond that, if we can move our committees one way or the other, move the start of a board meeting in one direction or the other, how board members felt about that. So my recommendation would be five-thirty PM on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Now, there's just calendars.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
Second by Moira. Uh, Sean, calendar is just a calendar, uh, time is relative, so it's whatever. We can be flexible, uh, on that day, uh, and make sure that we spend adequate time on the public. So, uh, move seconded, um, unless there's any real objections to that date, let's, uh, go ahead.
Robinsley?
Yes.
Sean Iverly-Bradwell?
Yes.
Aaron Croyle?
Yes.
Eldred Harris? Nicole Lefae?
I'm sorry, yes, yes.
Nicole Lefae?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Patricia Wadle?
Yes.
There you go.
Rob, just a quick addition to our student reps, um, it's, it's a ninety-two page document that's not ninety-two pages of text. So, uh, it's not actually ninety-two pages of reading and having a presentation is absolutely, um, fantastic. But any suggestions, recommendations, questions, critiques would be greatly appreciated, um, to hear from a student perspective. The safety plan, again, we relied on it most recently and it teaches us a lot of lessons. And so there's some other things that we can do to make it better. So, um, look forward to any recommendations, again, critiques, suggestions, et cetera.
I don't know, Sean, there's a lot of writing in it, if you ask me. You know, I, I jumped, I jumped to different places, but, uh, yeah, um, so I appreciate that, Sean. Item eleven point four, resolution to authorize expenditures for new board member training. Pretty, uh, all new board members must go through, uh, mandatory mandated, uh, by law, training to serve pistols and war permanence. And, uh, so that is an online, uh, access, of course, for us. Well, I think it's fifty-seven dollars, but.
I make a motion to authorize the expenditures for Kelly Eggs to complete the new school board member training.
Second.
Emily, please.
Robinsley?
Yes.
Sean Iverly-Bradwell?
Yes.
Aaron Croyle?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicole Lefae?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Patricia Wadle?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. Um, I, I don't, uh, I don't want to make speculative decisions. We do have committee updates on the calendar. If you wish to do updates now or just until, uh, January, that's fine. Consensus? Oh, well, Morris is punt, but, uh, well, for those of us, I think it's, for those of us in the room, it's a majority is a risk.
Right.
So, uh, so basically, well, for a few reasons, uh, for facilities and others of facilities, the, everything basically is on hold, waiting for Albany and SED, not a lot of updates. So we're waiting on phase two. We'd really just like to have more opportunity to, uh, to do, uh, true updates and so to say, well, we're kind of, we're in a waiting pattern because, hey, Albany doesn't have staff either. So, uh, we're hoping that, uh, but, oh, uh, we've got the policy, I'm talking about HR a lot later. So let's, uh, let's, uh, revisit, uh, in January and wanted to take a couple of minutes. When I say January, we, uh, we are not going to have a regular public voting meeting, uh, December twenty eighth. Twenty eighth, right? We're not, we are not meeting, we're not meeting during winter break. Everybody needs a break, believe me. And to that end, because we're kind of on hold with a variety of things, we are not going to have finance and facility work sessions next week on the twenty-first, it is Christmas week. Uh, I think everybody, and I'm looking at administrative team too, so. Everybody, uh, everybody needs to, uh, get through, uh, get through, get to the break. Enjoy school, uh, enjoy our work, uh, but, uh, we need a break. We don't need to be sitting here to play night and trying to work on facilities that we can't really do anything on because we're waiting for state, uh, um, we need to get to twenty twenty-two and, uh, and and be outside. I'm gonna, when it down, I'm outside, but I, yeah, I do go to work every day. I have triple backs and all that, uh, and I've been going to work every day for two years. I don't stay home. So, yeah, it's, and I have the privilege of doing that. Others have the privilege of working from home, if that's what they want to do in the real world. I go to work and it's just something that, uh, has been healthy for me to do that. So whatever keeps everybody healthy, um, uh, I like to be outside, I like to go play a game, go do, do things, be with the family, enjoy the holidays. Um, we are here, meaning the school board is here. If we need to vote on anything between now and the end of the year, we can have a special voting meeting. We just need twenty-four hours or so. Higher.
Rob. A quick addition, just for transparency, folks who, uh, can access the board docs for the Ethical City School District can look at any of our committees and read the committee minutes to get an idea of what we've been talking about for any one of the committees. And so it is available out there for any and all to, to take a look at.
And along that line, uh, just, yeah, for anybody who wants to read the safety plan, where can they find it?
It's attached to tonight's board agenda.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's under the, the item, um, that's the number. Yeah. Sorry.
Okay, all right.
Question.
And it's not on the website yet. It's not been, uh, all of, there's no, there's not been a public hearing, it's not been adopted. So it's, can't be on the website, that's like, uh.
Last, the last.
Us.
Right. But in advance of the public hearing, wouldn't it be good to have the draft for people to look at? Because otherwise.
Don't we do that?
I don't know, that's what, so.
Do we do that? We put it to.
Yes, we do. And it will be made available for everybody.
So if there's any, uh, edits or to that draft, please, uh, don't wait on it. You want to get that information out, so. So it is rare when we just have one, one voting meeting, December, we usually crank it up a week and then to, uh, next week would have been a voting, but, uh, Dr. Brown, do we need, we're gonna be okay, right? Uh, we're here, right, we're, uh, monitoring, we are providing advice and guidance, support just because we're not feeding in person, just being, we're not, yeah, right. Uh, hate to, uh, some school boards only meet once a month. Where we, they don't have work sessions, they don't do any of that stuff, so. Um, anything, Moira, uh, anything you need to discuss?
The accuracy of it, the safety plan is in the, it is.
Trust. And Dr. Brown.
One quick last thing before we all break, uh, so many people make it possible for us to have experiences, particularly in-person experiences. Thank you, Emily Tracy Arm, who's just returning to our organization after being a new mother. But Emily is feeling nice because of, uh, we needed her to be here tonight and she's just meeting us one seamlessly on the tech. Thank you. We appreciate you so much. And she did accommodations. I just get up here and start talking. Everything that's done in the back end is done by Emily. So Emily, you mean a lot to us. Appreciate you. Thanks.
Yes, we're happy that Tricia is taking a little bit of break and which is fit and she's, uh, feeling better. And, uh, because Tricia does an outstanding job trying to keep, uh, me in line for, uh, yeah, it's, uh, that's a, that's a big job. Students, uh, kids, uh, thanks for being here tonight. It's, uh, really helped, uh, the conversation and helped, uh, helped everyone, uh, move forward a bit. So it's, uh, and really thanks again to the Phil Sherman fifth graders. As I said in the past, uh, when I was in high school, I never ever went to a school board meeting. And certainly when I was in fifth grade, I would, I never ever would respond to, uh, this school board. So you all do things that I said, I was a student in this district, so thank you for that. Enjoy, uh, this next week, enjoy the break, enjoy the holidays and have, have some fun. And we're done, by the way.